Health and welfare activity shows a significant reduction over that 10-year period. And this is because there were -- health and welfare activity incurred 6.7% budget cut during this time period. There's also have been reductions in staffing at com care, aging. In CDDO, there's been a change in the reduction of the amount of state support for some of the activities, and those cumulatively amount to this decrease in total spending for health Looking at revenues, I spoke before about the expectation that activities generate program revenue as much as possible to pay their own way. So we don't have to levy general taxes on citizenry, and what this chart shows is 10 years of history. Property taxes was about 17 million lower at 145.28 million versus 162.916. And you can see over the 10-year period, program revenue increased initially about the same as property tax, but then starting in 2010 through 13, there were decreases in program revenue pretty consistently. And during that period of time, property taxes took a slight dip, but stayed essentially constant over that 10-year period. As a result, at the end of the 10-year period, 2016 property taxes are now substantially higher than program revenue. And what the chart shows is the past 10 years, the county has become increasingly reliant on property taxes as its principal funding stream to pay for county services. Because we are so reliant on property taxes, we pay a lot of attention to the collection rate. How effective are we at collecting property taxes that are levied? And what this chart shows is 10 years of history for collection rates. The most important thing is the county's collection rate, which is controlled principally by the activities of the county treasurer, has never been bad. As you can see, in the past 10 years, we've never been below 95.5%. That's the worst performance year in the 10-year period. So you can see the collection rate at 2016, or excuse me, I get confused on this slide. It's 2015. It's the 2015 tax year that funded our 2016 -- okay, I'm getting a lot of head nods. Sorry, thank you for understanding. So we end that with a collection rate of 97.66%. And that's the highest collection rate that we've had on record. So it suggests that the treasurer has been doing a very effective job of collecting property tax, which is very important for us because that's our primary source of funding for the government. Finally, I want to talk about long-term debt, and what you see on this chart is 10 years of history for the county's outstanding debt. Within each year, there are different colors that represents the different kinds of debt. So in 2016, the county had 54.5 million of general obligation debt. The green at the bottom. 2.2 million of special assessment debt, the blue line immediately above the green, and 133 million of PBC debt. And then at the very top, represented by that black line, there's a slight amount of lease debt, and that's for leasing fire apparatuses. What it shows is the general obligation debt of the county has decreased steadily since its peak in 2009 at 85.4 million, down to now 54.5 million. The PBC debt also started decreasing in '12 and '13, but it spiked in '14, caused by refundings that year. Now also, in the statistics section, there's some charts that show 10 years of data about county performance. And this really could be what citizens are interested in, and it shows what are they getting for their money? So I want to talk about, during the conclusion of this, I'm about wrapping it up here, is just that, what did the county do with all that money we just talked about? So we'll begin with public safety. In 2016, we averaged a little more than 49,000 calls per month in the 911 center, a 4% increase over a year ago, and a 30% increase over the 10 years ago. EMS responded to almost 5,200 calls per month. That's 3% less than they did a year previously, but a 28% more than 10 years ago. In the juvenile detention facility, the average daily population was 55. That's about 14% less than a year ago and 54% less than 10 years ago. That's a representation of the policies that you and your predecessors adopted over the past 10 years to intentionally try and reduce the need to house juveniles in detention facilities. It shows that you've been successful. Similarly, in the adult detention facility, the jail had 1,373 people in custody average day last year. That's a 2% reduction and 10% less than 10 years ago. Once again, you elected to adopt a series of what we'll term alternative jail programs, diversion programs, that are intended to provide different ways of handling people who have committed crimes rather than housing them in the jail. And what this shows is that these programs have been very successful. They reduced the average daily population in the jail 10% over the last 10 years. We provide those public safety services with 1,404 employees at the end of 2016, a 6 tenths of a percent reduction, and a 4% reduction over 10 years ago. So what it shows is that the county's providing more service with fewer employees. You also see that's a pretty common theme as we move forward. And we go to the fire district, they had, the fire district reported they responded to 214 residential structural fires per 100,000 households. That's a 28% increase over a year ago and a 3% increase over 10 years ago. The other side of that is that their increasing need to provide first responder medical services. They responded to an average of 423 medical calls per month, an 8% increase over the previous year and a 77% increase from 10 years ago. The fire district provided those services to the county from nine fire stations, no change from a year ago, but a 13% increase from 10 years ago. In health and welfare services, remember I said that was the second largest expense activity of the county? Comcare saw 13,476 mental health clients in 2016. That's an increase of 4% over a year ago and 1% over 10 years ago. CDDO, 2,592 citizens of Sedgwick County who were eligible to receive those services. It's a 1% increase over a year ago and a 24% increase from 10 years ago. And we provided health and welfare services with 476 employees, and that's a decrease of 2% from a year ago and 15% fewer than 10 years ago. In public health, the health department had appointments with 147, 358 clients in 2016. That's a 14% decrease over one year and an 11% decrease over 10 years. We provided 21,700 immunizations, a 63% increase from the previous year, but a 20% decrease from 10 years ago. The number of tuberculosis encounters were 3,050, a 20% decrease over one year and a 51% decrease over a 10-year period. Culture and recreation services. The zoo had an attendance of almost 710,000, over 710,000 people in 2016, a 22% increase over a year and a 20% increase over 10 years. Sedgwick County Park had an annual attendance over a million people. That's a 6% increase from a year ago and a 7% increase from 10 years ago. And culture and recreation provided those services with 99 employees, 3% less than a year ago, and 21% decrease over 10 years ago. Here are the results at InTrust Bank Arena for 2016. So we only have a one-year change because the building isn't 10 years old yet. So you can see the number of events were slightly down, annual attendance obviously would be down as well if the number of events are down. The Polestar ticket sales ranking for U.S. Arena is number 35, and that's 52% increase. And the profit return to the county since opening is over $2 million, and that's 23%. In public works, the number of road miles improved was 122 miles of roads, and that's a 34% decrease over one year, but a 39% increase over the 10-year period. The number of road miles maintained was 603, no change from a year ago, and a slight decrease from 10 years ago. Number of household hazardous waste tons disposed, 571 tons. 5% decrease from a year ago, but a 25% increase from 10 years ago. And they do that work with 129 public works employees, slightly less from a year ago at 8 tenths of a percent, and a 2% reduction from 10 years ago. Finally, in general government service, in 2016, we served 294,138 voters. That's a 7% increase from a year ago and a 24% increase from 10 years ago. The number of real estate taxable parcels was 212,851. That's a less than 1% change and a 3% increase over 10 years ago. The number of documents filed with the register of deeds, 77,642, a 1% increase from a year ago and an 18% reduction from 10 years ago. See the number of real estate records processed at 56,600? And all of these were done, the number of general government employees was 404 employees. That's 4% more than a year ago, but 8% from 10 years ago. And that concludes my presentation. And with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you might have about this information I've given you. If you don't have any questions, I would ask that you would receive and file the CAFR report.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the information. I don't see anyone asking to speak right now, but this is a lot of information. And I know, as you have indicated earlier, that you have a great staff that helped you put this together. We appreciate it. It's important that we do our books well, we keep track of it, and we're able to share it with our constituents. So we appreciate the hard work that you all put in. Thank you very much. And a comment from Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On that accounting rule that changed in 2015, was it? Is the state still showing that as unfunded liability, or they just take that off their books now and it's only on the county? Do we know? I don't know how that -- I guess I'd --
I'm certain that that accounting rule change did affect them, so they would also have to have that on their books as well, but for the state employees.
I see.
Am I stating that right as far as the GASB 53, is that what that is? Am I saying that right? I don't know for sure, but we'll find out how they account for it as well, and I'll get back to you on that.
That was about, to the state, that was about, at least when I was there, it was about $8 billion, if I remember correctly, $8 billion unfunded liability. Maybe I'm wrong in that number. I think it was between 8 and 10. It seems like it changed pretty quickly, but the state's done a number of things trying to make that look better. And so, again, that unfunded liability on our books was transferred over to us. What was that number again? The unfunded liability that was transferred to the county was how much?
122 million?
122, okay. Well, let me just say, I really appreciate the report today. You did a tremendous job, staff, fantastic job. These are all the things I'm always curious about, a lot of things to think about now. I'm sure I'll have more questions at some point, but I just wanted to say thank you, great job. And my takeaway right at the moment is, you made a very compelling argument, we're doing a lot more with less. Almost all the slides towards the end there, just really am impressed at the leanness of our county. We're continuing to provide more and more services with less people and finding more efficient and effective ways to do that. The only one I think I want to comment on, which I think is really interesting, I don't understand this number, that is the immunizations. We made a number of changes to our immunizations program, I think in 2015, it started in 2016, and a 63% increase in immunizations in one year. Can someone please follow up and find out? That seems like an unbelievable change to me. If there's any background information on that, I'd like to know how that was calculated or what's going on behind there. That just really is quite surprising. But my takeaway is this, is that we're just doing, we're much more efficient perhaps, I think, in the last 10 years, and certainly in the last year, and it seems like almost every number is trending in the right direction. So, very encouraging report, and I'll say thank you so much for presenting that, and good job to all the staff that helped put this together. And that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the report.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further comment from Commissioner? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Rick, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item O, reported the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting of June 8, 2017.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. On June 8, the Board of Bids and Contracts met and discussed and have recommended to you today four items. Item number one is 2017 Bond Tech for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Schilling Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $786,339.45. Item number two is the Employee Dental Benefits for Division of Human Resources. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Delta Dental of Kansas Incorporated and establish a three-year contract with two one-year options to renew. Item number three is Fire-Smoke-Dampper Repair for the Adult Detention Facility, and this is for Operation Support Services. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Blue Star Contracting LLC in the amount of $79,917 and establish contract pricing at the rates listed for three years with two one-year options to renew. And our final item, item number four, is Floor Care for the Adult Residential Facility for Division of Corrections. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Source One Management Services Incorporated at the rates listed and establish contract pricing for one year with three one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the four items.
All right, thank you, Joe. Commissioners, are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, what's the will of the board?
I move that we approve the recommendation of the Boards of Bid and Contracts.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a couple of seconds, and so, Madam Clerk, would you call the vote?
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Joe. Next item.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, my skulls, county manager. Recommend you approve consent agenda items, pop up through Zulu. No move?
Second.
Thank you. No standing second. Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Next item.
Legislative Issues.
I don't think we have anything to report on that at this time of the year, so, Mr. Dennis?
Under other, normally I don't ever say anything under that, but today I did want to make a couple of comments. I missed the beginning of the meeting, so I don't know if you recognize today was Flag Day or not. Someone that wore the uniform, all of those folks that have worn the uniform ahead of us that perished for our country, that represents our country, and it's very important. I fly in front of my house every single day, and I just wanted to recognize that today was Flag Day. In addition, if you didn't read the news today, it's the 80th anniversary of the Wichita flag also, and this is what the Wichita flag looks like. There is a nice article in the newspaper that describes what that Wichita flag symbolizes. So I just wanted to recognize that today is Flag Day and the importance of that. The other point that I'd like to make is, this morning I missed the first part of the meeting because I was able to go along with Commissioner Howell to recognize Wichita as receiving the Abilene Trophy. It is a traveling trophy. Evidently, the city of Abilene, Texas won it a number of times, so they decided that rather than them just keep it, they would start allowing other communities to get that trophy. The submission from the Friends of McConnell was over 200 pages long detailing everything that the city of Wichita and the surrounding communities in Sedgwick County does in support of McConnell's mission and troops that are out there. I was very pleased to represent our commission this morning, along with Commissioner Howell, in recognizing the Chamber of Commerce, recognizing the Friends of McConnell, and especially recognizing McConnell Air Force Base in what they do to support our community and what we do to support them. I apologize for missing the first part of the meeting today, but I thought that was important to be there. The third point that I'd like to make today, and I'm sorry that at noon we lost KPTS, so it is going to be taped, so if anyone wants to know what we have to say, it will be on there. But yesterday, some of you may have seen the interaction between the county and the city on the ambulance issue. And I truly believe that that's going to be worked out before the end of the month. So I'm not saying anything whatsoever, other than the fact that we have a very, very, very professional EMS operation in Sedgwick County. Just inside the city of Wichita, we've got over $30 million investment in equipment, in trucks, in supplies and so forth, in all of the buildings and such. Our annual budget just inside of the city of Wichita is over $16 million to support the citizens inside of Sedgwick County. We're one of only two in the entire state of Kansas that are accredited. We're only one of 180, I think it is, out of 16,000 in the nation that are accredited. We have one of the most outstanding EMS ambulance services that you can imagine. In addition, every single one of the paramedics or EMTs that we have on those ambulances are certified. And they're certified to a standard that's set forth by the Medical Society of Sedgwick County and overseen by our Office of Medical Director. I don't see how any civilian ambulance company could ever match anything that we do. In addition, our current rate of going to see, pick up someone in a non-emergency mode, our current is right, almost 98% of the time, we're there in less than an hour. Again, I don't see how any civilian operation could ever come close to what we are providing to the citizens of Sedgwick County. So I just want to go on record saying that I am very, very, very proud of our entire ambulance service. Again, I am certain that the leaders in the city of Wichita as good partners, and we are working harder and harder every day to be good partners, they're going to recognize the same thing that I recognize and that each of us, I think, on this table recognizes that we are providing probably the most superior ambulance service they could ever get. And I cannot imagine how that they could ever think that a civilian contractor could ever do the things that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I think we all would second all of your comments. As you were talking about the military and Flag Day and those sort of things, the manager has made it known to me at least that this is the 242nd birthday of the Army. Is that correct, sir?
Absolutely. It's Flag Day, 242nd.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Eric Yost, County Counselor. The other section is usually reserved for Commissioners. I do want to point out that this is probably our last regularly scheduled meeting for the month of June. We may have a special meeting, we may not. But I did want to bring to your attention that this is probably the last regular meeting for Misha Jacob Warren. You know, I needed her in the room for me to say a couple of things, and so I, she's not easily tricked, Mr. Chairman, so I told her that Commissioner Ranzow is going to raise Cain about some agreement, and she found that entirely plausible, so here she is. Misha is leaving us to go to Wichita State University, her alma mater, and something that's near and dear to her heart, and I don't want to interrupt that. I think that's great that that's what she would like to do, but we're going to miss her. I want to publicly express my appreciation to her for a job very well done. When I first became County Counselor, I consolidated all the contract writing in the hands of one person, and Misha was that person. And she's just done a superb job. She's had all the agreements with the law enforcement training center that she has worked on, and of course, many other, literally thousands of agreements that we have, that she's just done a great job. She's a very capable person, very professional. She has a tremendous work ethic, and she's just a great person. So I wanted to bring this to your attention, Mr. Chairman, and I know that we'll all miss her great work here at the county.
Well, thank you, Mr. Counselor, for bringing that up, and I know that Misha, I hope, understands that what you said is the honest opinion of Commissioners and, I think, all the staff and the people that you support. So, we will miss you, but we're happy for you to take another position that you think is good for you, because we want the best for you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's going to be hard to follow. Since you brought that up, I'd like to just take the opportunity to just say that I have the greatest respect for Misha. She is one of the very best writers of legal language I've ever seen. I don't understand most of the things she writes because she's good at it, I think, but she's a tremendous person, outstanding individual, and I think she's going to be sorely missed by us. I congratulate her on a step that I'm sure she's wanting to take, but we're going to miss her, and she'll be probably nearly impossible to replace, so good luck, Mr. Counselor. I would like to just echo some of the comments of my previous colleague, Commissioner Dennis. I would say he did a good job yesterday representing the county, at least my viewpoint. I'll say he represented me in terms of his comments to the city. I appreciate Director Hadley and our EMS system. I think we have an outstanding system of care. You know, some people talk about the glass is half-full or the glass is half-empty. You want to extend that out to EMS, the glass is 98% full, and it's hard to focus on what's wrong with EMS because there's just not much wrong. And we've been, in my opinion, unfairly criticized about some of our response times when you can, no one's perfect. There's no such thing as a perfect system. And because of the way we do provide care, you're going to find someone in the community that had to wait more than 16 minutes. There's going to be a few out there, but it's understandable as to why that is, and these are people who are receiving care, they're not accident victims. These are people who are, these are planned transportation, planned transports, and so we do our best to make our commitments, but every once in a while, because of emergencies, those planned transports are impacted slightly. And so, and I don't want anybody to wait any longer than they have to, but I would say that we're focused on providing the very best care for every Sedgwick County citizen and doing it at the least cost. And should there be any changes to EMS, I'm concerned about how that might impact our ability to provide these services, whether we have to reduce our services or increase fees to basically backfill what we're currently doing, should that delicate balance be upset. So, I agree with my colleague. I hope that the contract that was presented ultimately is acceptable to our colleagues across the street. Almost, I'd say, probably 90% of our calls are inside the city of Wichita, so the greatest impact is to Wichita citizens. And I hope that we can continue the many decades-long relationship we've had with them and continue this good service and find ways to become better and more efficient and effective. But to focus on what's wrong is really actually hard to do. I think that you guys do a tremendous job, and that almost everything is really good. And so, I just want to say that publicly. I was going to mention Flag Day. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis, for bringing that up. I wanted to congratulate Wichita for their flag, which, by the way, I think 10 years ago, you wouldn't even know what the flag was probably, but lately, it's on, I saw a tattoo on someone's arm, I think in the paper this morning. I saw three cars in, ahead of me, I think, in the last day or two, three cars side by side, all had the Wichita flag plastered on their bumpers. It is iconic, it has taken off, it's cultural, and I appreciate the fact that we were It is iconic, it has taken off, it's cultural, and I appreciate the fact that we are now excited about being associated with Wichita, how much, I think especially our younger generation has identified with that Wichita flag. I say congratulations to all of us, and especially our friends across the street, for creating something we can identify with. It's exactly eighty years old as of today, so that's fantastic. I also got to attend the Abilene Trophy Award this morning. I had to, unfortunately, I had to leave to come to this meeting. I'm glad to be here, but I hate to miss what was being presented, and have to walk out while Colonel Miller was speaking, but we've got some tremendous friends at McConnell Air Force Base, and that's in my district, and I love them. I am a veteran. I know, we have Commissioner Ranzau, Commissioner Dennis, we're both veterans as well. We love the military. I appreciate them so much. This community is unlike any I've ever seen before. Being in the military, I've been to places that I didn't think really appreciated the veterans like we do in this community, and I think that's exactly why this trophy was awarded to this community. Friends of McConnell, as well as Derby, and the citizens of Wichita and Sedgwick County, I think have really demonstrated through a three-inch submission of letter after letter after letter that was submitted to the judges of this award, that were overwhelmed, I think, with the community's support, and were very impressive, which is why we got this award this year. I think that that just speaks very, very well of Sedgwick County and Wichita. It's not just about the Air Force Base, but it's about this community, and how, in fact, I think Commissioner Dennis made the point that Congressman Pompeo, when they were talking about the KC-46 and where that would go, they were asked two questions, you know, can the base handle this? And second of all, what's the community's support? And again, overwhelmingly, we support the military and the veterans, and so I'm just appreciative of that, and I hope we continue that. And then, last but not least, I'd like to just take a point of personal privilege, just in ten seconds, just simply say, I love my wife. We are celebrating our twenty-seventh anniversary this Friday, and I am blessed. To me, it's been a tremendously happy time of my life. I hope she's been happy. I don't know if she is or not, but I am just celebrating, right now, celebrating twenty-seven years of bliss and wonderful marriage, and I want to say thank you to my wife for loving me and putting up with me. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Speaking of anniversaries, I don't know if we've honored our chairman, but they just celebrated their fifty-fifth last weekend. Congratulations to our chairman.
I know. If my wife likes me so.
Anyway, I did want to-
You think you know.
I did want to say a couple of words of thanks to Misha for all of her support. I've only worked with her for six months now, worked very closely together on the EMS contract, and I appreciate all of the support there. I sent her an email the other day and asked if we could clone her, and we haven't figured out how to do that yet. We're working on it right now, but I just want to extend my sincere thank you for the support that you gave, and all the advice. This morning, I don't easily vote for something that I haven't read in great detail, and the fact that you and Eric Yost assured me that everything that I was concerned about was in there, that allowed me to place a vote, and I want to thank you very much for your service.
Well said. Okay, anything else? I don't see anything from the manager, counselor, and nothing from Commissioners, so we will be adjourned.